Can you share with me, is there something I can do to make it easier?
Yeah, actually, I send you this.
You all have the PDF for Flavio's presentation, so.
Anyone can project the PDFs anyway, so you don't have to.
So anybody can project it from. Can I connect to there?
The wireless was present. Oh, it does.
And the technology workshops getting off to stellar technologies.
We got the right guy here.
We do. That was my one positive. Here we go.
So Ryan, anybody who's interested in insight their board by now, they'll go away.
Is there, there's not an H two minus?
Do the curial mind if we swap spots? Yeah, Flavio, I'm sitting there. We're gonna, we're gonna make this more of a dialogue, which is what I like anyway. Oh, it's not up there.
Did it change the source? Yeah. I thought it swapped.
So as we're getting started, if you don't mind, I just, this is our first workshop together, so it's a little bit different than our retreat. We're focusing obviously on the topic of technology. Very excited for Flavio Esposito, Brett Wood-Pairant to be with us this evening, as well as a professor, and is going to share with us his insights into the rapidly evolving and changing world that is AI. This is meant to be a dialogue. I was able to share many of the questions that you sent with me with Flavio, so he has done a great job trying to address those in your present, in his presentation. But this is really around a conversation. This is not the only, you know, we're not making any major decisions today. It's about expanding our knowledge as a group as we think through the role AI can play in education. There is no deciding today. It's just learning and information gathering. We are gonna try to shoot for, now we're getting a late start, but we're gonna try to shoot for about forty five minutes to an hour with Flavio, and then we're gonna have, we're gonna have time for Sean to talk more about cybersecurity in the district. And yeah, so Flavio, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
I will try to sprint.
These are some pretty heavy topics that can take a very long time.
It's an honor for me to be here. A lot of smart people around me, so I really appreciate the opportunity. And I think I want to start with why should you listen to me? You really shouldn't. But I am a parent, so I really care, and I have been doing this for quite a while. I started to work with AI-related topics, you know, when I started my PhD back somewhere in Boston. And now I've sort of managed a few grants that have some aspects of cybersecurity too and AI, but really is about, you know, distributed systems, which some of the research I do is scaling AI to, to make it faster for training any friends on a few applications like healthcare or agriculture. I'm concerned about it. So, and then of course I'm an educator as well, so I try to bring this in the classroom. And I, you know, some of my students are already professors. Unfortunately, I'm getting old. I will start from your questions, and again, this is an outline that I got from you. Probably some of you have recognized the large language model format. How do I, what do I ask? What do we want to know? So, so these are the three that sent out to me, and we can talk about some of these. So as an educator, that's where really the first three, one application of AI most excited about for college and, and sort of for younger folks. What is the path for students interested in working and developing AI? I actually think the second one requires, you know, a few workshops. But then what age do you believe is appropriate for students to begin utilizing AI? I have a slide for all of this, but I wanted to, I don't know if this is supposed to be interactive or just me talking.
You can read this.
So, so I'll, I'll start with what I do a little bit, so I'll start with this question. So clearly, there's a lot of applications of AI that are sort of present in this area. So I focus on the one that San Luis is strong, which are healthcare and agriculture. Right? So Missouri in general, and so there are these things of predicting disease for humans and predicting disease for plants. And so those are awesome examples that actually people, not only students, I only can see in the classroom, but they can go up there and meet. And probably many of them are the parents who either work in healthcare or farm, for some farming companies like Monsanto or, or the death for plant science center, which I don't know if you know, is the largest plant center in the world. They have, they have over a thousand PhD, so it's really a great opportunity for, for us to connect maybe with them, and I do work with them. So, you know, those are applications. And then of course robotics. Robotics, which is not really exactly what I do, but I do have application robotics, which are more sort of tangible and exciting for, for children too and, and high school. So, so this is what I think is also useful. I, I've seen people that essentially no STEM, you know, interest, that have no STEM interest using it for learning a language. We used to have this app like Duolingo or others, and now we can actually speak to them. And I think it's exciting also to bring it back to sort of the actual Lego, so that you can start early. I think in San Luis, there's a great robotics team. I know other school districts are participating into, into robotics in general. And, and then, you know, clearly they like video games, so, so game development would be one. I believe, I'm not sure I should mention Obama, quote Obama, that says, you know, one of his speeches, like, "Make a video game, don't play with one." It was talking to kids. And so definitely with VR and XR, it could be a way to go. And I really encourage you to look at the White House research priority, which I think are related to today's discussion, because they are suggesting as a first priority to say trustworthy AI systems. So really NSF is investing, NIH are investing into this. And so we should start from, from the ground too, from these new leaders, right? So what does this mean, right? We don't know yet, but, but we, we can stop and discuss this since it's related. It's also later discussion. We want to make sure when we query something, you know, we can trust the answer and how do we build this? It's a different question. So anyways, I don't want to spend too much time on, on the research. Instead, you know, there's a more interesting and very hard question to answer. What is the path for students interested in working when they are? So to me at least, development of whether it's robotic path or what is a large language model, which is really hard to develop. But it's really about writing code, so we should really be asking when do we start introducing coding, right? And so this is too much to discuss, and I started, I started doing slides a long time ago when you asked. And then I said, you know what? This is not really a slide. This is a technical report, and it would take too much. And so I bring to everyone as well, and this is again, a bunch of thoughts, and it's not a paper or anything. But, but really what I wrote in there is that you can start from logic development and then start to introduce code and application. There are a lot of apps out there. Even I bought one with my iPod at home, you know, to sort of spark and spark people intuition and then logic loops. So it really is about math and data science that are driving AI in general. But I know you're worried about large language model and how are we going to avoid academic integrity violation and all of that, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Also for administration. Do you know where we're at on COVID-related classes? I think we've talked about one like six months ago on the board.
We have a few. So we have, we have a couple of modules for Project Leadway at middle school level that are coding related, and then we have your science essentials at high school. And that, the goal is to put that high school course, like this is the first year they're offering it, to then continue with the progression of courses that are offered by Project Leadway at high school level.
That's great.
And that course is being offered at the high school level to freshmen, and then you roll it up each year? Or is it freshman sophomores, junior seniors?
So I don't, I don't know what grade levels are in mold this year typically Project Leadway. It's not grade level specific. They do sometimes have like pre-grads, so if you started in eleventh grade, you could get next one, twelfth grade, you know? In terms of ninth grade and middle. I, I'm familiar with three of the high school level courses, and maybe all they have is three. But there's also a partnership with AP, so they're, like computer science can also be AP courses. And I met your son and his coding class.
Yeah, I'm starting.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so, you know, coding is not everything, but it's part of it, right? So there is also just logic and sort of understanding how the brain works in general. But, or really understand how to do prompt engineering, which is what the industry has been telling us. We have at San Luis University, and what she was like, there are industry advisory boards. And so we asked, what should we teach these kids? And they said, and I was like, "Prompt engineering." What do you mean? We can't teach prompt engineering. Yes, you can. And so we started to introduce in the classroom. What is the same thing to me as what do you Google? How do you find better, how do you find better your answers? How do you rely on these answers? So to answer these other two questions, and again, please stop me and interrupting, but what age do you believe is appropriate for students to utilize AI? So this is, we need to dissect AI for a second, right? You really meant large language model here? If yes, then it's the same thing as, as using the internet, if you will. If it's other things, they already are using it. My son, for example, you know, he didn't know write or read, but he realized that if he keep pressing one button, he, there is a voice spread up and he can, and he can send an intent, show me dinosaurs videos. And he's using it already. So it's, you, you think you want to do this in the classroom, but they already know. And that's obviously a common understanding.
Flavio, can I, I want to make sure that we're all in this, like the large language model.
Yeah.
We're talking about ChatGPT, things that, I just want to make sure that we all know.
I'm sorry, I should have defined it. Yes, yes, ChatGPT is an example of what is a broader notion of large language model. And, you know, every big company has one, whether it's popular or not, like Google has Bard. And, and even when you Google something that is, whether you use Bing or really Google, there is usually is utilized the AI-generated answer with some references, right? So when I say LLM, I really mean ChatGPT or other alternatives. So, so what age is appropriate? Don't have really a good answer here. It's, it's maybe not too personal. It's like, when do you give the phone to your kids and when do you give the browser to your kids, in school or at home? So they might find answers that you might not like unless you install parental control or, or other things that are now are not widely default and implemented by default. So I don't know what this could be, but in the classroom, I think even for elementary school, it can be very helpful. Not only for teachers, but also for, for students. As they do, you know, in fifth grade, they do research, they have to look things up with their guardians. And then a concern regarding AI, children, brain development, and utilization of AI. It's too recent to have legit studies, I think. But again, this is my educated opinion, guess actually. But probably there are disadvantages or abuse of technology in general, like your phone. But as long as they're guided, I think, obviously, if I'm saying the obvious, please push me forward. But so, you know, this is the same problem that we face in college. Do we block this ChatGPT? Do we encourage it? And how do we regulate it? That's really a big question we might be interested in discussing today, right? So I have some, some insight of what we do in college. It doesn't mean. It doesn't mean everything needs to be translated into a school district. But, but for sure, whoever doesn't want to get up today isn't being. Teachers who don't like to get up today, they might, they might not teach the same way, right?
Is there a need for teaching critical thinking skills more because of this or the trust in the thought?
So if you ask me, not if you adapt. I don't think we have, I don't think, again, you can argue about this, that if you have the same method, when the calculator was not allowed and now you have a calculator, then you're a problem. So the thing, the secret here is be aware as a teacher and as a student, these things exist. They could be longer, they could be faster in a lot of things and then adapt your teaching method. That's really the bottom line that I have for today is adaptation of the teaching, right? So, but if you are, you know, in some cases, like you have an education in general, marginalized community, people don't have resources, they're gonna get impacted for sure, right? Let's say you're teaching a loud chat GPT at home and you don't have a computer, what are you going to do? Right? Same thing. And so this is not a surprise to me.
Flavio, if I can add to that too. I think, you know, I was still in the classroom when Google first started, like it was a thing. And we were, I was a social studies teacher, right? So it was the idea that kids are gonna just be able to Google all the answers. They're never gonna learn anything ever again because they're just gonna Google. Well, it forced us as teachers to maybe multiple choice test questions that are just rote memorization, isn't where we need to be stopping the learning, right? I, I learned in high school, it was much more memorization based and much more regurgitation of knowledge versus than the thinking pattern. And so to me with AI, it's very similar at the same time, which is we need to teach appropriate use. We need to teach kids to think critically about information and not just accept everything as fact. And whereas an organization, we need to come to an agreement is what are those frames? And what are those things that we're gonna put in place to educate, to make sure that kids are using trustworthy NATO? What defines trustworthiness? What are the ethics that go along with the use of AI? Which goes to, you know, is it plagiarism? Is it that? Is it this? And then professional development for teachers, which we have a committee, a technology committee that will be forming, um, to talk about what are the implications? Cause there's a lot of things that this could, with a teacher shortage, AI can really help take the things off teachers' plates that make them exhausted if we do it in the right way. So we need to educate teachers around that. And then also, but it also, on the other hand, will make teachers have to think differently about their instruction and how they engage. And so how do we provide, to your point around our children already know how to use AI, probably better than some of our teachers. And so how are we helping demonstrate the support for our teachers to be utilizing this and that balance of any new technology that comes out? And we are cautious with our movement forward in there.
Exactly. So I'm gonna reach slide, but I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, LLM is, is a very large example in this, but there's many. I mean, what I've seen in industry is that each, each application provider out there wants to integrate some form of AI within their product. I'm sure that learning, educational, ed tech, whatever world is no different in that. In that, you know, they're, they're putting safeguards within their products to protect it. But then also, you know, that's kind of on us to have a process of evaluating these technologies. And if we're comfortable with it and the way it's changed, it could be something we've had in the environment for decades. But now we have to take a fresh look at it with extended features. I think all that comes down to, you know, how do we keep track of our technology and reevaluate it periodically?
I agree. I think there's a lot, the ed tech sector has definitely jumped on it. And I think there's a lot, you know, also talking about marginalized communities. There's a lot of pieces with individualized tutoring that is available through AI and many of the resources that we have that have added a tutoring feature. That is far beyond just right, wrong, but like actually you can ask prompts and questions and solving and can identify how you got the problem wrong. And talk you through the steps. So there's a lot of pieces that can be, again, very positive. But then again, just like all things, we've got to keep monitoring and an eye on it.
Right. I think we talked about this, I'll skip it. So what, I think one interesting question here is what are you most concerned about? Is we try to educate the next innovation in this area of rapid technological change, right? Then we don't know, right? It is merely an answer, but we have to talk about this. Uh, yeah, there is a lot of concern for, for ethics. There's a lot of concern for trustworthy even from the White House. And, and so we need to sort of monitor as a teacher, as, as a guardian, what happens when they're looking at these videos? What happens when they're looking at these answers and are they really doing their homework? And it's not a smooth transition, too smooth. I think we have to still see what's going on, even in, in the classroom. This is the hardest challenge I face every day. How do I know this is not an AI generated and how do I make this engaging? And so one of the questions is fundamental is what do we do if they can look at the information? We try to give them unsolvable problem with AI, which is our challenge as teachers and educators, right? I'll give an example is that you have to figure out how to, you know, I don't wanna, I have too many details on this example, but like go and talk to your people and figure this out. You know, sure, use whatever tool you have, people and technology, but this is not problem I have solved today. Go ahead and solve it. So it's a different assignment, it's not like. And the other, and the other sort of comment I got, we have one of our assist, our professors that is a retired high school teacher in another school district. I'm not gonna mention it. And he gave a, a great suggestion, which it seems obvious, but what should we do? Parents still aren't paid. In that case, we're talking about how to teach code. There is co-pilots here that, you know, you can say, can you solve, especially when you're learning how to drive? It's really easy to, for them to get the answer right. And, but if you force them, or I've talked to English teachers at John Boris and others where they say, I have to give the assignment in class where I need to see as they're actually writing. And there is no take home, homework anymore or, you know? So these things are probably going to change because we're gonna have tools that are better at detecting. Although right now they're not, we're not there yet, but so.
So I'm kind of curious, just kind of looking forward, you know, how do we prepare our students for, you know, life after school? What are some of the skills that they're gonna be able, they're gonna need to live in this new AI world? You know, right now we're focused on problem solving and critical skills development and, you know, coming up and being, you know, creative with a lot of the, the challenges. AI takes care of a lot of that to a certain degree. So, you know, what are some of the, where do you see kind of the industry going? And what are some of those areas that will be very beneficial for recent graduates in high school and or in college too? Cause AI will effectively take some, some jobs away in the industry. Just like, you know, just like when the internet came out and, you know, big systems that always is part of it.
I agree that this is, and I'm sure everyone has an opinion of this and, and I have a slide or I think of this, but AI is gonna take some job away. Just like we don't bring the horses to, you know, to clean anymore and we bring zero economy. And then there is this, you know, famous quote that you're not going to be, you don't have to be afraid of losing this type of job. But maybe AI is not gonna replace us and I speak as a computer scientist. These things are amazing. They can do great things. I'm just gonna do it fast. I'm just gonna do it better. I'm just going to avoid these boring things, but I still need, I don't think we're there yet where, even though some big scientists say that we're in danger. And the general knowledge that we're not. But so if you don't know what it is, you might, you might be left out. Just like if you don't know math, because if you find a job, if you know math, you might find other type of job. So I don't think we're in so much danger. Uh, but that's again, my, my sort of two cents, right? Who knows? Who knows?
So as a, as a college educator, if you had a freshman class coming in, what expectations would you have that freshman of knowing how to responsibly use AI? Cause that's what at high school we're preparing them for, right?
Right. That's a great question. So there are things that we can do, uh, to prepare them. It doesn't matter what discipline they're getting into. And I think if we are talking about this, uh, so first of all, work ethics in general, like, you know, I think it's very, very important. Not because I am from a judge's university. But then, you know, being able to use your tool at the best. Like you have to drive the car, it's the same thing exactly to me. You have this thing, no, you don't have to drive, but you know, a lot of people that are very adults and they can't drive, they can still survive. But, but they have this tool and they need to now use it effectively. It's not by case that this board, industry advisor board told us that we need to teach prompt engineering. And I've seen many people, they use it better than me. And I'm like, oh, cool. I should do that too, right? Not just to summarize it to the basic things, but if you're actually studying, it's a new subject in a way. And I don't think it's gonna go away. But if you think that it's gonna do everything for you, you're completely wrong, right? And, and there is many students that we see, freshmen especially, who they think they have it all, right? Not just the essay, but even the coding. And there are tricks that teachers can, can employ, you know, to make sure you're directing or teaching someone. But they really need to understand, even when they send an email, I see so many, you know, immature students email that clearly didn't write this. And so facing them, you're not gonna get a job if you send this email to this person looking for a job because it's not you. And that's, uh, so really understanding how what's the truth and what. It, it's probably one skill that I would say for sure we're gonna need this. But then other than that, you know, it's not, uh, it's not, I don't think this has changed drastically the way we should educate in high school, right?
So how are the professors then taught like some of those, those tips and tricks?
Great, great question. You mean, how do we, so I have a game in the slide here and it's fine, I can talk without slide. No, it's great. Prompting to your mindset.
Prompt engineer.
So we have, for the first time this year, we have, uh, we told to regulate it. And before we still regulated personally without an official policy, but you are supposed to include in the syllabus, right? Right now. How is your teacher, professor, instructor thinking about what's appropriate and what's not? And there are some classrooms like beginning code, beginner coder where it is very clearly spelled out, if you're doing this, you're cheating, right? And you shouldn't be cheating because you wanna go out and drive because drive before you drive Formula One car. So other times, you know, some, some professor really banned it, but I think it's just like anything else you ban, right?
They'll find a way back.
But it's not easy, you're doing it, you ban alcohol and drugs for example, even though they might be having autism. So it is really very, very specific to the subject. I personally don't ban it, but I do encourage them to use it. And I do create assignment where they realize that if they just play or they ask, it's completely wrong. But I had to do the work first, right? Saying what is going to reply if I ask this? It's surprisingly, surprisingly good at a lot of things that I didn't know it was good at. But, but then this critical thinking, you know, if you, you know, it can give you insight, but it's not really the solution sometimes, right? And the other, the other sort of interesting thing that happened that I've seen over the last, you know, three years, people do stuff better. They do more advanced things because of this help. And that's really satisfying, right? So you have this help, therefore I'm raising the bar. Because I know you have the solution online, maybe somewhere, but then make it work. You see, it's not that easy, so go back and learn the basics or you will fail anyway, right? So we, so partial credit is a little bit, that one is inflated, not, not really the great itself. Because I know what you can do, so you should learn how to use it.
Yeah, and that's the part that kind of gets me is of the creativity, right? So AI will potentially give you the answer and then the kids have to go back and they know what the answer is, so they have to figure their way out. That leads them down that one path. That path may be right or may not be right. Whereas right now today, we're teaching, you know, hey, you go try something, fail, try something, fail, try something, fail, without that ultimate goal. Like the AI or Google will potentially tell you. So that's where I kind of wrestle between, you know, the creativity and the problem solving. Those are really critical skills.
So the way I see this concern, and I, everybody else can have a different opinion obviously, but I think that this process is getting a little accelerated because you fail faster.
You what faster?
You fail faster. And so you learn more advanced things a little bit faster, at least in what I've seen. You don't, but you know, at elementary school level, uh, so our sort of high school, middle school level, let's say middle school. You know, that could be more of a danger where, because there's, there, what they're being asked to do today might be perfect already with this help. So, so that's why I think teachers must be up to date on what these things can do. There's no, I have many of them already, I believe, but I might be wrong, but. So, um, so again, you got a great question. I wanna really stress this out because I think one of the most important thing I want to, you to take home is that we can help, we universities can help. And we are sometimes paid to help in not just, because it's our job to, to educate and to outreach the community. And so the more, and I know a few faculty members in our, at the school that are here, but the more we connect and we brainstorm with this and the more our school can benefit from this. In particular, I can give an example, I do have, I do have funding, for example, to hire, to support some activities that relate to, in this case, precision agriculture. And I'm already working with K-12 of the, uh, there is an institute called Ice Core, which is founded by Krista Jackson. And she's in the Department of Education in SLU. And she brings minority children from all San Luis to SLU every Saturday. And then we do activities with them. And so there's no AI yet for, for them, but you know, we have a budget. Sometimes our research grant have a budget for those things and we NSF give us money because you are, you know, reaching out also to schools and so on. So, um, so again, I don't know that we have the perfect use case, but I encourage this board to try to reach out, to look a faculty member, to see how they can help, just like you did with me. But more sort of towards students and teachers, right? And I'm not asking, and this is very clear because I know that everybody has a busy schedule, so we have to do meetings from seven to nine. And so I think there should be perhaps maybe financial investment or time buyouts for people to get updated. And maybe I've seen the obvious, but you know, some faculty member like me or my colleagues can bring the money, but then the money is not the problem. Sometimes time is the problem. So I really encourage you to, to give, you know, development time to your teachers first. I'm sure you already do that, but it should be something interesting.
Do we have funding right now set up to integrate AI?
We have a technology budget, but not like, and we have professional development funds and AI is the topic that, that we're learning more about. Um, we're putting together a committee and those are the things where it, it's not a AI budget. But if there are things that we get to a space where we would need to support, that would be part of the overall budget that we would talk through. I think Flavio and I talked about this when we met, uh, previously around this partnership with local industries and with universities. And I think that's a huge win. I know it's not through SLU, but I worked for Institute for School Partnership in the district previously. And, you know, the, the resources we were able to access through, through Wash U was, it was game changing and it was an underserved, uh, school district. So, um, I think there's a lot there where we can work together. And I also think the more the collaboration, particularly with universities, I find that there's always been a kind of a disconnect to K-12. And we always talk about what are the kids' skills that kids are missing that K-12 is not preparing them for. And I think the only way for us to be more involved in that conversation is to talk more together. And so the more that we can partner, I think is really important. So, um, budgetary implications, we are not, we are not, I would say we've got lots of conversations to happen before we get to a place where we're completely talking budget. We have enough in our. Budget, we have enough in our kind of buckets right now, but it's not identified as just AI.
So I'm kind of curious on like university, you mentioned implementation, so is that AI, you know, you have a set of tools that go towards like a large language model to, you know, do you also have a large language model for the data that is coming out of the school? Or operations, or decision support capabilities to determine what classes are gonna be popular in the future based on other, you know, students' selection? Is, are those two totally different things, or am I getting them jumbled in my head?
I mean, definitely people use it, not large language models for this, but definitely people use AIs to try to predict some of these things. Mostly it's still old fashioned. I would say I don't know what our chief of financial option is, you know, what tools does he have to make decisions on where should we invest? But we we don't really have that, I think we're not there yet. It's more a little bit futuristic, and mostly because, but however, so not in education, but in other fields, in other sectors that are specialized language models. For example, Amazon has been not really focusing on building his own charge GPT, but has been focusing on on serving the healthcare industry and making it training with medical records and medical data, so that they can have a more dedicated product for for certain doctors. But not, I don't know what's happening there, but I just, I have read enough to to believe that. So obviously, data-driven decisions has been around since we can collect data, and this is just the way, you know, this large, this charge GPT has made this field a long more popular, but but people have been using statistics for a lot of things already.
Right, absolutely, they were just looking at it from like an operational standpoint, you know, we have some classes that might have like one or two students that wanna take it. Well, if we knew what those one or two students, kind of their their path, their path to success, so we can prepare and be ahead of it as opposed to kind of scrambling.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
Just to support.
Right. Yes. So now that you've retargeted the question, I can tell you, there are tools that might run simulations based on what skills they could acquire and what sort of career path they could unlock. That's definitely an interesting tool. And whether large language models could help for sure, like they could help in anything, maybe they could help write the code to write that simulator, for instance. But I'm not sure we're there yet, they're not super, super smart like this, in my opinion, but I might be wrong. So again, I don't wanna talk for an hour necessarily, this is only slide ten, but I did receive a lot of questions. And so I don't know, you can definitely, you know, post the slides anywhere. And this is what you're talking about, I think, right, like the planning data. So my sort of, you know, two scientists to sort of try to use games in, so not just video games, but everything. And that might help teachers give idea of just like anything else, right? So how do I create a game to teach this? And then, you know, obviously, admin can get help too, I'm not sure about automatic grading that much, I don't really believe in this. But 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 measuring the bias might be good, because I had experience in high school where my teacher, no matter what I do, gives back, you know, should give me the same grade. It's more of a personal revenge. But anyway, yes, bias exists unfortunately, and so we need to deal with it.
I think these key applications for me are are really powerful when we look at teachers, when you look at things like looking at your curriculum, looking at your lesson plan. Things that used to take teachers significant amount of time. If you're writing an anchor paper to use as your model for your students, it can as much as be one of our students not to just use, type in a paper. But you can have kids use a rubric that, and score something that AI has created, and they can, there's just things that, again, I won't say time suck isn't the right word, but take teachers a lot of time. Curriculum writing in and of itself, as we talk about priority standards and, you know, lots of different pieces of work that we're talking about that take a long time. It's not that, it's, to me, it's the white space in front of you where you're starting from scratch. It saves us from starting from scratch, so when I get teachers together and time is of an essence, it's not starting from nothing. It's all right, give me some Missouri Learning Standard, you know, proficiency scales. And then as a group, we're talking through what do we like, what do we not like, what works for us in our, with our students, and having those conversations. And it's the efficiency of that, I think, is a really key piece. Then I also, again, I go back to some of the pieces that when we look at tutoring and helping students and helping students look through when you use it in the right way. How it can really be a game changer for some of our kids who may need a little bit of extra help. I think if we can do it in the right way, it can level the playing fields for some kids, but it's also about making sure they have access to the tools that they need to be able to do that. So this, and all of this conversation is very meaningful and important to me, but I think those are really examples of of things that we're already starting to do and play with, and it's just more a matter of what does that look like as we get more comfortable in education with them.
I also think with some of these things, just from a parent's perspective, the idea that homework help or the way things are being taught in the classroom, if students are going home and having homework to do, but they have a place where they can go and ask questions. You're saying twenty four seven, you have a chat bot that can help you with some of your homework problems. That also alleviates some of the stress at home, and just making sure that they're still getting that support.
And with the productivity comment you made, I think that's a great point, getting productive, but I imagine that developers using AI to help them code divide what they need to produce, is that going up? So.
I didn't hear that, but I heard that, and I've seen with my PhD students, that they ask questions a lot less. Things that are, of course, I know this, and then, you know, here's how you do it. And but it helps tremendously to divide mostly, I'm not sure if people have the same experience, but for a few, but there are, there are a lot of this. Whether or not you have to code faster, it doesn't really work like that. I was a software engineer for for three years, and you still need to think.
Right.
Right, before you can write your code, still need to have logic, like anyway, just. But yeah, once you have probably an idea and you can very much detail this idea, then it can be faster, you can be faster too.
Well, I think the teachers leveraging it, the products are very, very cautious to support those that may not be as adept as leveraging it and not help them feel like greater expectations on them.
That's helpful.
I think, I think that's the, that's kind of the challenge across the board for students as well, like how do you really judge, you know, grade an assignment or grade a lesson plan? When it is created by AI. You have to come up with a creative prompt, but that creativity pretty much, I mean, doesn't stop there, but it sparks ideas and it sparks, you know, changes to your thoughts, come up with potentially new solutions, I see a huge advantage for the teachers. The students, that's the part that I I do struggle with a little bit, especially in the elementary age. You know, there's, you know, a piece of paper and a pencil is a really good thing for them to, people to see a blank sheet and write stuff out.
So I also learning that at one point.
Yeah, crawl, walk, run.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would also, there is a time and a place for everything, and I think that COVID made us, I also say, just 'cause you can doesn't mean you should. And I think, you know, not every meeting should be a Zoom meeting, we could have every board meeting be a Zoom meeting, but as much as I'd like to, you know, be Zooming with you all in my sweatpants at home, I think there's value in gathering in this space. And I think there's a, there's a time and a place for computers to be put away, and I would say in education, particularly what we also have to do is we we develop some bad habits as an education field, I think, with COVID of like, well, everything's on canvas now, and it's great, and it's easy for kids to look at it. But there are certain times where, like, we shouldn't be labeling a map on a computer when a paper and pencil map can be done in half the amount of time. And, you know, we're navigating tools that are, it's really actually testing my ability to make a text box rather than my ability to know where the continents are, or whatever, maybe. So that that is one of my personal experiences with my own sixth grader, so the frustration level. I think that there's, I think that's the biggest part of our conversation, is the thing that it doesn't replace and it shouldn't ever, is conversation. And when we talk about what professors and professions have already said, that is, K twelve education, we need to do better, is, is those kind of conversate? Like, how do we have conversations with our peers, how do we disagree with our peers? How do we create environments where maybe I, you know, I chat GPT to answer, you did, you did, you did, and now we're gonna bring them together, but we're gonna talk about what's different, what's the same, what do we think is accurate? And it's, it's again, finding that next step that creates an expectation that the students have to do something on their own with that information and using their own mind. And that's, that's just good teaching, like that's, what we have to do is figure out, making sure that the teachers have the skills to kind of be ahead of the game, to know when to stop and provide that professional development and those parameters around, you know, when is it the right time, when is it not, giving them permission to say that computers can go away, even in a one-to-one school district, right, which most are now. So I think that's where this is so important in conversations. Rodney, I know, is having the technology committee will have, these are conversations we've already had, you know, Sean, Rodney and I meeting together, that this is, AI is just another layer in this, it's not the only piece of this, this isn't, that part's not new, that's a conversation before AI happened, that we'd need to balance.
So are we gonna touch upon the policy that's drafted?
Well, we were gonna have this conversation, and then we'll bring the policy back up. I did share the policy with Flavio for any insights or in pieces that, you know, it's a pretty general philosophy.
I think one last point that has me touched, and there's many other questions here that you asked, but it is about privacy and what are they doing with their data, right? Don't have an answer to that, because it's very subjective, I think I have my own opinion. But I also can give, tell you what the National Science Foundation is recommending. Whenever there is clearly proprietary material, whether it's a grant proposal or even a scientific paper to peer review, you're not supposed to to feed it to a large language model, not even to summarize or so. So they are, they are taking sides all the way, because it's intellectual property material. And so we are actually submitting materials to a private company, right? So, and so that's why there is a debate. But in general, we, I don't know, I believe we are, you know, there are, there is research on how to make sure that we preserve the privacy while training with your data. We're not there yet, right? Yeah, there is some way to preserve it, but depends what the tougher strength is, right, as we, maybe here. But, you know, we have no privacy already, I think, so it depends what you mean by privacy. I actually had a partner last month, you know, if you are in the woods and you are, and you know, and everybody knows where your location is, and we also know there is a wolf, that it sounds like the babies, should you be aware of the wolf sounds like the babies? And who else should be aware, right? So there's always this trade-off between services and and privacy. We are giving up a lot of our privacy already, there are studies that shows that many people don't have any, any notion, any, any interest, but and this is another way we use this data, we we sign an agreement, and then it's a good luck, right? So should we worry about this? Yes. If you talk to a conference of privacy, I've interviewed a couple of them, you know, it's obviously, they're bread and butter, so, but we are not there yet, we don't know. As a community, we don't know what they're, definitely they're using our data, and some of those scandals that have come out, they're stupid.
Are you speaking of PII data or?
Every data you're fed into, every question you have, like, you know, I know people that are interviewed, they Google call them, oh, you've been Googling a lot of interesting questions, wanna hire you. How do they know, right?
So it is a balance though, because, you know, as a educational entity, I mean, there's responsibilities that are protecting student data. And then also, you don't want the kids to not be aware of what data they can share, so it's a tough balance to teach and tell yourself.
This is definitely not limited and confined to to charge GPT. But I think for that reason, it's easier to regulate it, because then you know what, have you uploaded a picture of your children online? Should you?
I think that's the part too, is where's the learning for the kids around the responsible usage, and to your point around like, what should they be sharing? How do you identify what a bot is, do kids even know if they're putting something out there in social media? And then balancing that with the fact that you can teach a lot of things, but we all know kids are kids. They will work around systems, and so how do we make sure that we have some safeguards in place? If they would choose to make a bad choice, because they're young and impulsive. And how do we, how do we balance that all, which is really, really hard.
We're going in education of use of it, should probably not only do it to the educational environment, but that they're, they're gonna be around it, they're, they're, in the day. If we're not teaching them how to use it safely without violating those privacy rights, then it's a factor to protect our kids.
I think the other factor to this is we're talking about educators and kids a lot, but what about parents?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and depending on your field, how often you engage with AI or know about it, or, I think that's, I think the the parent knowledge piece is a huge piece that we could acknowledge better on.
Well, it's eight, I'm gonna stop here, but if you have more questions, I, I, you know, you have the slides, this is sort of my, there's another summary here that I think, I mean, it's sort of a touch on everything we have said, and really, I believe in training teachers first. That's because I am a teacher too. So thank you, and again, I'm here, but I don't want to steal any, I'm happy to come back and be more, work one-to-one with anyone, and if I can.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it, Flavio, thank you so much for coming today.
All right.
Thanks, all right, thank you. All right, Sean, we'll transition, everyone's a stretch break for a second. We're gonna transition.
Flavio, I like the paper you started for us.
That's good, yeah, I'm glad, I don't, I can give you the source, I will remove my name, you can use it.
No, it's, I mean, it's just fantastic information.
I I just cracked this up, I use charging with these for an outline, but then I don't mind, right? But that's a disclosure, every student.
I'll just give you a little framework to work with it, yeah, great, thank you so much.
Sure, you're welcome.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
You're welcome to stick around, but I'm sure, do you know how to get, Ronnie, do you wanna?
No, no, I know, I'm on my way out.
You sure? Okay, I see, I don't know if it's faster to go at the front if your car's on the way.
Oh, it's okay, I'll go down, I'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
We're gonna get him on our curriculum instruction board advisory. It'll be informed by the technology department, I've already asked him. So we'll be sending that communication out later this week, I'll make sure his name is on the app, whether he, he'll be bond told. I I wanna thank you all for getting me in touch with him, because I really enjoyed talking with him and meeting with him. All right, we're gonna turn it over to Sean, thank you so much for presenting tonight. We know that cybersecurity and data privacy is top of mind in everybody's world, and so Sean was great and kind enough to put together this presentation for us. Just kind of getting us all caught up to speed on the things that we are doing as a district to protect ourselves as much as we can.
Yeah, for those of you who have not actually met me in person, I've been with the district for fourteen years. I'm the network administrator here, which is kind of the de facto title of, I oversee the department, budget and things like that. These are all things that we are already doing, so this is sort of just a review of our current status, kind of an update of where we're at. As far as cybersecurity goes, oh, I did reorder a couple of the slides for just kind of flow.
It was in the agenda, it is in the agenda.
Yeah. So currently, last year, for those of you who are aware, Music, which is the insurance company that we use, released a set of cybersecurity guidelines. A lot of school districts have. A lot of school districts have suffered attacks over the past few years. It's a pretty, pretty big issue right now. There are lots of districts that were not situated for that sort of thing. And so they released a set of guidelines. We were already in the process of doing quite a few of those guidelines. They're pretty industry standard, they're best practices across the board in IT. And so we were making progress on those already, but the guidelines sort of expedited that process. It just made us think a little bit faster about it, try to get some of those things done.
Hey, can I add a, can I ask a question? So Music, who are they specifically?
The Missouri, no.
Are they an insurance?
They are our insurance provider.
So this is what they require companies who subscribe to their insurance to attest to?
So yes. So the guidelines are not mandated, but they do affect the policy cost and the deductible that is, that we have in case we were to have an issue. So districts that don't abide by the guidelines are subject to an increase in cost. And so that's, that was their sort of recommendation for all of the districts to do it.
So do we, do we tell them we're doing it then?
Yeah, we report to them. It's seven guidelines that they released. And so we submitted a report, kind of, I mean, it wasn't, I wouldn't call it a formal report process, but I did supply information to them that we were following these guidelines and that hopefully we never have to make a claim on it. So, yeah. So the main bullet point number one of the guidelines was two-factor authentication. Is everybody aware of what two-factor authentication is? Any of you have a, you wait. This is where you get a text message for your, you know, your bank or something like that. So we have enforced, when we started a few years ago, it was turned on and staff could make their own choice whether they wanted to use two-factor authentication or not. Quite a few people actually did, which surprised me a little bit, but we had quite a few people opt into doing two-factor authentication. It's now enforced for staff. In fact, if I were to add a user, there's a two-week grace period for them to sign up for the two-factor, or they get locked out of their email immediately after that grace period. And so then I have to do some stuff behind the scenes to get them back into their email.
So what's the requirement from staff? I mean, are our population users are much beyond staff here?
So Music does not require it for students. And I think that it comes down to convenience for the student body because we have Google accounts all the way down to second grade and managing two-factor authentication in the classroom level for a second or a third grader using a Chromebook would be a lot of overhead. And so they did not require it for students. It is actually enabled for students and students are free to turn it on themselves and use it, yeah. And we do have a few high school students that actually do use it. But that's the only reason I would assume that they didn't enforce it for students.
Yeah, that makes total sense. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah. High school would be okay. I mean, you could probably teach high schoolers how to do it, it wouldn't be a big deal. But as we move down.
Your challenge becomes what is the, what is the second factor? And are we getting cell phones out every two minutes today?
That's not.
Or another email that we're now wanting to do another email.
So getting back to about Music and using them as our standards, I mean, being an insurance organization, is there some more industry guidance out there that we really should be baselining ourselves against rather than our insurance provider?
I agree, yeah. And I think there is. Like I said, it's best practice across the industry. Lots of ITO and various frameworks that enterprise-level companies, public enterprise that can use, these are all standard things. We do backup, we do two-factor authentication, we have an advanced, 374 is our EDR, which is a response and detection application. It's like antivirus on steroids. It contains an antivirus component. It also scans for malware and rootkits on the devices and it will scan web traffic in real time on teachers' computers.
Okay. I know MSBA supports us in many ways, has guidance from K-12, six, I'm not sure if anyone's aware of this, we have district self-assessments out there as well as the frameworks potentially. Are there any others, industry provides for K-12 organizations?
Not that I'm aware of, but there might be.
Okay. Can we look into that?
Sure.
And see how we meet this.
Yeah, I'd like to look at the MSBA one. I think one of the things with Music and my previous, we upgraded all of the cybersecurity at the time because of the Music expectations. I think it sped up what was already considered to Sean's point, this was all work we'd been doing. We just had a timeline to enforce it so that we could ensure our, like, there's monies attached to it, so that of course sped up the process. But none of the things that it required were things that weren't already really on our radar. But to your point, having another tool to kind of run it by is definitely valid point that we need.
First I've heard it was a new recent addition to them that required some.
And Music probably spurred that. I would think they already had something, you know, in the works, but.
Well, I mean, it was also because there were at least three fairly significant data breaches in Ziegler County alone, school districts, so.
I would encourage the K-12, I'll get this linked to you.
Yeah, what are you going to send it?
But that, it was in my question earlier as well.
Yeah, I actually.
This is very detailed of what it's looking for and it's only like four pages for the question, five pages for the questionnaire. I think it really.
Yeah, I know that we, every year we, that the insurance committee actually makes us do an assessment, oftentimes Kate will call me because she's filling out the paperwork and, or Matt will do it. Matt will call me if he's filling out the paperwork. And we go down the list of, do we have this in place? Do we have this in place? Are we implementing this? That was all pre-guidelines that they released. And so I think that was an evolution of their yearly questionnaire. And so this is probably a good, you know, a good thing to do is to go out and fill out that assessment as well and see what we're seeing.
Well, I think so, understanding where maybe we're not meeting certain things to the extent possible, you know, like MFA, we got it in these solutions, like, is that everything that you have? And we don't know, we're going off the desk, we have questions, right? And that's maybe sometimes where maybe an external consultant may be helpful to help us understand it for meeting Music or other requirements. I don't know if he's offering the educational space, but surely we're not in the, we're not the only ones in this boat, right?
No.
And ideally it's somebody who's independent of our current contractors as well.
I know a couple of people, yeah. I know a couple of people who focus on EDU. And then there are some other vendors that provide the solutions.
Yeah, we need to talk about how it gives us some more comfort.
We discussed it, we premiered it, so we appreciate it.
Moving on, so two-factor authentication, an EDR solution, those are guidelines. And then perimeter security. While on campus here, we have an industry-standard enterprise-level Fortigate. It's a fancy firewall. It does content filtering, application-level filtering, a lot of next-gen stuff, it's pretty nice. I hear Fortigate is rolling AI into some of their application monitoring. We are not there yet. It's, first of all, it's not even released, but we would have to go at a higher level to get probably that. We also do an ongoing monthly hosted scan. So there's an application, a web service that we run that basically pings our outside and it tells us if there's a port open or anything like that.
Do we have to do an internal scan?
We do.
So are we getting hit rather frequently or how often are these alerts popping off on you?
For the port scan, no, not, I have pretty much everything closed up. The only thing that we actually host on-prem is the suspend benefits portal and that's it. And it's locked down to the specific port that it needs. And so yes, that one is open. But it's 443, which is an encrypted port. It's the, you know, when you go to a website, it's HTTPS. Yeah, that's where we're running on that.
Do students have the print-on device?
They do.
How do we handle that network?
They're not. We have three different SSIDs, three different subnet B-LANs for those. So they're segregated from the staff network. They are subject to the Fortigates filtering. And if they're logged into their Google Chrome with their student account, they're also subject to the GoBarb filtering as well on their personal. As far as email security goes, we have implemented, we had actually implemented security before the Music guidelines came out. This was kind of a Google requirement, actually, and since we're a Google for education school, we had to make this change. It basically stops someone from pretending to be us and sending email to staff. And so there's a lot of malicious applications out there that'll send an email pretending to be Brentwood schools.org. D-Mark and SPF stopped that. It quarantines, and our quarantine is actually kind of, I mean, I, it's not uncommon for me to have to go and release emails that are actually legitimate emails from the quarantine because staff aren't receiving them. So it's a little aggressive, but that's okay. I'd rather be a little aggressive on that and have to manually release some emails from quarantine than have stuff coming in. It's pretty good about keeping up with it. Every once in a while, if there's a huge new barrage of spam coming out, we'll see a good amount of traffic, but it tapers off. Google's got a pretty good algorithm for that. Other than that, we do have spam phishing, Google has block lists. In fact, we're kind of going through that right now with some things.
Text from, I forgot. On an email, yes.
And we've got some other emails coming in that we're blocking regularly. The one thing I would want on that is I would like a more automated process for it instead of me having to manually block it all the time. So looking for a product that might do that level of filtering that we get to at some point. Internally, it's always a work in progress and there are some applications that require it, but we try to be least privileged as much as we can here. And so basically a staff member only receives the privileges that they need on the network. Unfortunately, a lot of education software hasn't come up with that and there are times that we have to have admin access, local administrator access on a Windows computer for software to either work or install properly. We try to monitor that as much as possible and keep it as low. Mostly just PLTW machines and anybody running, I don't remember the name of the software right now, but they're probably, either way, is probably the biggest offender because AutoCAD and Revit and engineering applications a lot of times require local admin access.
Is that something that can be managed through a desk process?
So one of the things that we have not done in the past, and I have discussed it for a couple of years now, is doing a more robust training and education for staff. And we have wanted to do some phishing testing for a long time and just haven't had a vendor and application that we settled on. Microsoft, we are transitioning to O365 this year for students and staff. And so Microsoft actually provides a pretty good phishing tool, hoping that it will work with our Google. We don't use Exchange as our email provider. We are a Google school. And so I'm hoping that I can still adopt that process and use the testing.
Oh, so we transitioned to Office?
Just for Office, 365, yeah.
Interesting. Is that going to make things too complex to manage?
No, I think we'll be okay. And I'm looking into actually making it single sign on via our Google authentication.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Currently, we don't offer it to students anyway. This is the first year that we've started adopting it widely and so right now staff are the ones that actually have accounts for it.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's one of the things on my list of which is and wants to do is I want to send out everything I possibly can.
Sure.
And there's a good reason for that, that I'll go over when we get to the user management stuff. But then here's what I looked at earlier. This happens. We do have occasional account sharing with teachers, especially when we have subs. And I have spoken at length about this every year and it still, it still does happen. I think it's better now and I think education and training is the only way they can, we can really combat it. But it is something that we know about and we try to safeguard against the best we can.
What do we do from an education policy perspective? Do we educate them on it?
We do, and we have AUPs in place that the staff sign.
I think this is one of, I think all of this is, we have trainings, we have things you sign similar to what Fabio was mentioning. We sign away rights on a lot of things, but we don't really realize what it means. Some of the best professional development that I've seen around this is when you do some of these phishing pieces out there and people start clicking. And even the text today, the people who responded thinking that it was me, like, oh, like, why is the superintendent texting me in the middle of the day and telling me to call you back?
Herman Nebraska.
Yeah, Herman Nebraska. I think those are pieces where, when people realize that some of the software that I've seen, when they actually found out that, oh my gosh, I was the victim of the, like, I clicked on the link or I did that, it helps a little bit more with the conversation of being important. I know people that are like, I hate two-factor authentication, I want to turn it off on all of my things, until they realize why it's so important. To me, it's constant, ongoing, not just one-and-done training. And I think right now we're a little bit more in the beginning of the year, sign all this stuff, do all this training versus continual small snippets of professional development to remind people why this is important. And that's where I've seen a greater shift in people.
Do these phishing tools give you learning moments right when it happens? Like, it's very real time.
Yeah. And that's what I think you need more.
And the monitoring you'll get from those and who the repeated vendors are.
That becomes a part of conversation.
Like target them with it specifically. But do we have, what type of tools do we have that for learning? It's not just, you know, sign on an X, I know what this email looks like and I should be looking for HTTPS or what kind of learning tools do we have for teachers today? Do they go through it annually or is this just more of a conversation that you have with people?
And there are programs, we use one, we use one called Arctic Wolf. For every two, three weeks, you got a three-minute little video thing that you had to watch and it's part of the ongoing, like I said, very snippet. We've talked about that, that that's really where the next level of our professional development is to go to, that it is much more in real time and much more continual, because the emails come out regularly to remind people of it being careful of, you know, if it's, which kind of A isn't in the email, those kinds of things. Sean does a great job of reminding people of putting out emails like today or the phishing, but just kind of something that needs to be built in, ongoing.
Yeah, like in corporate America, they would, somebody would send out a kind of an email blast on purpose and they would click the link and said, you know, here, this is taking you to your online training.
Yeah, you're right.
You're not following the protocol.
Yeah, there's programs.
Well, and we do that every year with the training that, I forget what it's called now, blanking on what it's, they, we all have to watch the videos and we have to answer the questions.
Yes.
Yeah, the vector training.
Yes.
I'm certain that we could find something very similar for ID related.
There's.
What's vector training?
It's the ones that we have to watch around on my education.
Okay. So there might be a TAC piece of that.
There could be.
And there are ones, there are ones that I know.
I'm also hearing you say the one example you provided of when teachers are sharing their credentials is the substitutes for reasons like that. That seems like an opportunity for us because the motivation to do that is because they're trying to teach their students and they're trying to share access. So I think we need to help them have or understand the way to do it.
Well, that's tricky because we may not need that license and you've got to balance out getting them what they need. It's never right to share the account to your substitute's license. But at the same time, they may not need it for more than one day a year.
So we do actually have a process for substitutes. We have a sub-account and generally it's always been instructed that the teacher share the information with the sub. Frontline was part of the frontline implementation was to address some of this. And the materials can be uploaded to frontline and when the sub logs in to take the job, they would have access. But again, I think we come back to training and time, that doesn't always occur. And if a teacher is just out one day, you know.
And just ease in the human, human element of any process or policy.
The other two problem areas that we really have is shadow IT is a thing, no matter where you are. You're always going to find people who want to use an app. They find an app they really like and they just start using it. Sometimes it's not even, I mean, they just like it and they just start using it. I try to remind everyone every year that those things have to go through us. If, just for the fact that if you ever need help with it, we have to know about the troubleshoot.
What would an example be?
TeamSnap. TeamSnap is an example.
Were these online applications you're talking about or installed applications?
Both. So TeamSnap, anybody familiar with it?
I.
Okay.
Take it a glance. I'm not a fan.
Uh, TeamSnap is in athletics. I actually use it, my son's on a mountain biking team and they use it for communication. It's like Parents Square, it's a parent communication app. The coach will have a TeamSnap account, add the kids to it, add the parents to it, they get messages, schedules about practice and everything like that. It was adopted without my knowledge, basically, back, you know, years ago. It was just convenience and everybody liked that app. So we, we do have that happen on occasion. I would say it has gotten much better over the years, though. It's very rare that we have any major curriculum or widely used apps just show up. Ninety percent of the time it comes to us.
Do we maintain an inventory of our apps?
We do, we do.
What's approved and not? And is there visibility to that, it's from the user base?
That, I'm not sure there's visibility. I don't know.
Probably not. I think that's something that could very easily, that's one of the things we want to work on, Ronnie, myself and Sean, is that process, to make sure that curriculum is a part of the, the process. And then also publishing that to, also have teachers know. I was in a, when I, when I was doing this work previously, it was a lot of, so to save teachers' time, apps that had already been requested that had been denied, so they knew. Or things that would be like, this is in place of, you know, there's TeamSnap, there's Got Sport, there's fifteen different kinds, like, no, this is the one we're using as a district that we've agreed upon, so use this one. So I think some transparency in that is, is another area. We've talked through the, the process itself as well as then communicating the process to streamline it for teachers as well.
Well, there's a lot of risk of using apps that aren't officially through the, through our organization because if they put student data into it, that's beyond our laws and that.
Yes.
Yes. And I have something on that as well.
So I'm kind of curious about, you know, not like web-based applications for kids playing games on their laptops, I know that that's been a problem in the past. How do we, have you guys solved that problem?
Well, truthfully, I don't think we will ever solve that problem. We implemented GoGuardian on all of our Chromebooks for students and the iPads are managed through a mobile device management system that has filtering via Apple's, you know, processes. It's, it's an ongoing issue and it's very hard to keep up with.
Do we use a blacklist process or whitelist process?
We do, we do. Well, so GoGuardian has a unknown list, like I cannot see their list, proprietary list. I have categories that are blocked. I can add things to an allow or deny list and that works fine. Teachers request a YouTube video or a website or something to be opened, I can allow that through or deny it if it's bad. But I cannot see the proprietary information of what they actually block. And that's true for pretty much any content filtering, whether it's Lightwise or SEPA or whatever you're choosing to pay for. Nine times out of ten, their sub is going to be completely proprietary and you just get a list of categories that you can block or open.
So GoGuardian, that's our network?
GoGuardian is.
Or is that your app?
So GoGuardian is the content filtering system on the Chromebooks and Google Chrome. And that's what blocks bad websites, apps, things like that from students.
Does it work through, I think, I don't want to call my kids out, but, so if they could, from what I understand in the past, they could put a link on a Google slide and click that link and it take them anywhere. Has that been blocked or how does?
They release patches. And sometimes it'll fill that hole and then a student will find another way to exploit the system. One of my favorites is Google Translate. So on a Chromebook, if you have Google Translate, which is why we block Google Translate on Chromebooks, you can actually type in a URL and translate it from English to English and then click on the URL and it will give you access to the site.
That may be.
See, if there's a will, there's a. That, that has never been patched. Google has not fixed it. GoGuardian can't fix it or won't fix it or hasn't fixed it yet. So our, we just don't install it. We don't allow Google Translate on Chromebooks. I mean, it's, yeah. And so there's always going to be an exploit and we're always chasing that exploit. That comes out so much faster online than what we can keep up with, what any district can keep up with. And we rely on our, you know, our technology that we pay for. We rely on GoGuardian to fix those holes and that's a process that they go through.
Yep. Makes sense.
Yeah. GoGuardian itself is an extension-based thing. We forcefully install it on the Chromebooks and as long as there's no exploit on the Chromebooks, the students can't remove it, so it's always there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's a browser extension or is it?
It is a browser extension.
So it's operating at the browser level and not the operating system level?
Chromebook is nothing but a browser. It's all Chrome. So it operates at the device level for a Chromebook. On a PC, it would be at the browser level.
So our network level is not having restrictions?
Uh, it restricted to the four gate, content filtering and application filtering.
So you have two levels of filtering going on there?
Yeah. I would say the Chromebook one is more robust, which is why we give out Chromebooks to everybody one-on-one. And that works on campus or off. Chromebook doesn't matter where it's at, it will filter GoGuardian no matter what.
What was the four gate filtering? The GoGuardian was the content filtering. What was four gate?
Uh, four gate is also content filtering. It has, it has a web filter.
Okay.
And then I think they have Apple iPad devices?
K one, yes. Mosile is our IBM for iPads and it makes use of Apple's built-in parental and filtering technologies and just kind of punches them up a little bit. And so all the K one iPads are pretty restrictive on their web. I think it's locked down pretty, pretty solid.
And I haven't installed anything?
No, I have to push out apps. Teachers can't install apps or anything like that. They submit a request if there's a new app needed and I push it out through Mosile and it appears on the iPad. That is highly regulated, yeah. I don't even think the web source shows up on an iPad if it's in the correct, if it's got the correct policies on it, there's not even an app store. Pretending to cybersecurity, but also just to our infrastructure as a whole, we have a DR plan, disaster recovery, we have off-site backups. Veeam is our backup system and Wasabi is a storage server, basically. It's Amazon Web Services. It's just somebody else. It's an S three bucket, but they brand it as their own thing. They resell it.
Do we have to perform on tabletop or do we have to exercise over that DR?
Uh, we have not here. I do do monthly restores, just to test to make sure that our backups are good. So I have tested the backups, but no, we have not done it. The main core services that we actually backup are Syspin and our database, our SQL database, which is Syspin, I think the key server, and then Active Directory in case we need to restore Windows stack.
Yeah. So you have like DR procedures outside of these backup procedures?
Um, not really, no. Our DR plan is pretty much just to restore a bare metal if anything were to happen. Internal monitoring, we monitor a DAMR IP. It tells me whether servers are up or down, if there's anything going on with them, ports or anything like that open. It's kind of similar to the outside external tests, but it also alerts me if something goes down. It'll send a ticket to our, our ticket system and let me know. And then we follow, you know, industry standard patching. We automate patches on the Windows servers. So when Patch Tuesday hits, our patches apply as soon as it goes through the schedule and they reboot overnight. I'm working on PDQ to do software deployment because up to this point, we've kind of always done a manual golden image type of software deployment.
What's PDQ?
Uh, PDQ is basically a computer inventory and software package manager. So we can tell it to install Adobe and all that other stuff and it will. And it'll automate the patch flows, which is nice. And then as far as network switch infrastructure and firewall and stuff, it's as reported. So four gate sends out a bulletin when there's an update and a patch.
So if there's a vulnerability in the infrastructure, network items we have, do we have to issue through four gate?
Or, or reboot, or switch reboot, yeah. Yeah, we're basically subscribed to their bulletin reports, so when a new patch is available, we get it and we patch it.
I'm sorry, going back to the disaster recovery, is that, that's monthly or is that weekly?
Uh, the backups are weekly.
Weekly?
Yeah. No, the backups run weekly and it's iterative, so, I mean, it's not full backup every time because we're passing traffic up to Wasabi and that would be really expensive, we'd really full transfer. But no, I do a test restore on a test server once a month, just to make sure we're good in case I would need to restore. We're, so, we're not large. I mean, we have two Active Directory servers and a lot of stuff is off-prem now. The important part is Syspin, we don't want to lose our financial system. And so we back that up, used to, we backed that up to Tyler as well, but Tyler's not doing that. They don't take FTP backups anymore and so it's on us fully to do it. I know Matt runs a backup out of it weekly, maybe, I think, and puts it on the server and then we're backing up at a database level and at a file level.
Already you got a back in that offsite?
Mm-hmm. That's the Wasabi is an offsite location. We're not big enough to have a cold site or a warm site or a hot site. The cost for that would be way above our goal, so.
Would the recovery time of pulling that offsite backup be reasonable, like an hour?
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, probably a lot less because we're only doing Active Directory and a SQL database that's not even a few gig size. It would be really quick. It would probably take me longer to procure servers if we had an actual disaster. I'd have to get creative, probably, ordering servers to see if we could get back out. So, moving on to student data privacy. Yes, one of your questions, Ryan, I saw on the theme was, you know, what we have as far as regulations go. So we are FERPA and COBA compliant. We add that any app requests or software requests that we get, I don't always do that, some of that is in curriculum, but a lot of just the iPad app requests and things like that, I will do. We don't currently use an external framework for that, but there are some that are available. Education framework, right? Is that it? Yeah. Morenet offers a service. It's an extra service that isn't included in our membership fee and so it's kind of a pay-for-to-go type of thing, but it will go out, it has a database of that it apps as well.
Okay, so we wouldn't sign up or do a contract with an app company unless they, but.
Yeah, they have to meet those requirements.
That state the testing.
Yeah, and this is why internally, I have a pretty big policy about using EDU licensing for things because most of the time, if we're paying for an actual EDU seat that's government and education focused, it's gone through that any process already. iPad apps are a little different. I mean, those are kind of, I have to go out and I have to read the terms service and I have to check and sometimes email them and see what their stance on FERPA and things that are. And I've denied a few apps in the past because of it. Most of the time, it, it's okay and a lot of the free apps that you get on iPads don't actually pass student data up and so we're usually fine for that. And then we have to be SEPA compliant as well. And E-rate funding, which this refuses, is, it's mandated for that. And so this is basically our content filtering. The SEPA law is kind of broad, but it states that we have to protect students from inappropriate material online and we do that through our filtering the best that we can. And that's, you know, required for our E-rate funding. And then the students, I don't know if parents might know this, if you've ever tried to email your student, you'll get a bounce back saying that due to district policies, you can't actually email them. So egress and egress traffic to student accounts has been disabled since day one. We have an allow list for certain colleges and applications like PFTW and SSD are allowed domains through our network, but students cannot send or receive email to the outside world. And that's at every level, that's all the way to 12th grade. Some schools implement let 12th graders do it just for convenience for college applications and, you know, things of that nature. We've never had that discussion, we've always just blocked it. That was a requirement when we decided to move one-to-one, the board at the time and the community, that was what they wanted. So, and I actually think it's a great idea. Yeah, my son is a SFPF, he goes to Metro in the city and his inbox is full of spam all the time because they don't implement that. But, yeah. So those are the regulations that we have to abide by. So as far as user management goes, it's reliant on the other departments. I mean, we don't create credentials until the technology forms have been signed and HR sends us the information in frontline, saying that they've been signed and they will create accounts for staff. And then the same goes for students. The registrars get all the paperwork in place, they get the, you know, policy signed, they decide whether they're going to take a Chromebook or bring your own device and then they pay over the optional insurance and that sort of thing. And once all of that is done in infinite campus, we create accounts for them.
You mentioned Samuel earlier, as you get new applications, do you come and send them with them?
As, as long as it's available, yes. So like Adobe and hopefully Microsoft Suite, all of those will be single sign-on canvas, clever, they're all Samuel through, they're integrated with our Google. And so if I suspend an account in Google, it loses its access to that application. And that helps with licensing on the Adobe side and it helps with security on everything And you can see, so K five devices stay and they don't take those home. We did suspend that rule during COVID. All the kids took their iPads and their Chromebooks home, but once we came back to in-person, the elementary schools do not take their devices home.
We have alternate, like, it's like the [inaudible].
I'd like to talk to us all about that because back to my, just because we can doesn't mean we should.
My house. That's what Sean had.
I would, I would again utilize the, just because we can doesn't mean we should and I don't know if it's really a good use of anybody's time, energy or effort. So it depends on, on this for our future, I would want to, to look at that.
And Portia lives, like, that's okay. Yeah, she gets, I don't know how many times I've had to reset her password, she gets upset every time I do it. But six to twelve, do take their devices home with them.
So they get devices every year and they keep saying one through certain periods?
Um, so as part of my budget, slide coming up, we implemented a phased-in approach for middle school and high school where we replace sixth and ninth grade every year so that a student making the transition up into the new level will get a device that they'll take with them the whole time. Elementary, since they don't leave the classroom, we still do a three to four-year replacement cycle on all of those devices. It's kind of broken up by grade level, like we do two and three one year and four and five the following year on that cycle. I wish, I'm trying to figure out a way that I can implement a more phased-in yearly approach to reduce costs and keep a steady flow coming in. I'm just not sure how to do it at the elementary level yet, just because of the usage of those devices.
I need to ask you a question. When do they get to keep them from grade to grade?
Uh, sixth grade, the student move to a brand-new device when they come in and then ninth grade when they transition. So from fifth to sixth and then eighth.
They turn it in every year at the end of the year?
So they do. There has been some discussion, a couple of years now, about whether we let them keep them all the time through the summer. Some districts do that, some districts don't. There's, I mean, there's no right or wrong answer for me. It doesn't, we can manage them all the same. I can break a device anytime. But, you know, it just depends on how we want to deal with them. Yes, they turn them at the end of the year and then we barcode them in so that the students know that they turned, we know that they turned them in, they don't find for them and then like a library book. And then at the beginning, the first day of school, at least here, six through twelve, we call them down in their families or in their advisories and we can deploy all six through twelve in about forty-five minutes, so.
I think, and it doesn't matter if it's the same digital device or not.
No, we don't track it by that. A Chromebook is a Chromebook.
Yep.
So we just have a barcode and a scanner. It's in Volit Destiny, which is our library software, there's a warehousing component and so that's where we inventory all the staff and student devices. And then we talked about this already a little bit, so offboarding, same process. If a staff member leaves or is terminated, we get the information from HR frontline and we suspend the account. Or in some cases, we transfer ownership of that account to the next person coming in. If they have a lot of data that's pertinent to the position, a lot of times we'll change the password and give it to the new person to clean out and then eventually we suspend the account, so. But the password is changed and it's controlled, so. And then I'm not really a part of the process as far as students transferring or coming and going. That's more of a Sue Roy and registrar thing, but the process is similar. I mean, we'll get a, you know, an email or a call from register saying the student has transferred out. A lot of times, middle school and high school are really good about putting work orders in for it, elementary not so much. We use a ticket system and it's just email-based, it's just Help Desk. And so they can send an email and it creates a ticket in Fresh Desk for us. That way we have documentation and can track everything. Middle school and high school are really good about if a student comes. Middle school and high school are really good about, if a student comes in or leaves during the year, they'll send us a ticket and we'll do it right away. And then, during the summer, I'll audit everything during summer maintenance.
What about summer school?
It's changed over the years.
Okay.
It's a lot of launch now. So, we don't actually manage launch, that's a Springfield Public Schools system, and our students receive a Springfield Public Schools account, and we have allowed that domain so that they can log into their Chromebooks using the Springfield Public Schools account for launch.
Even dur, so, during the summer, will they be able to use one of our laptops?
Yeah. A lot of times, if the student's taking summer school, we know that and we tell them to keep their device.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Sometimes they don't, and they have to come back the second week and be like, hey, I get Chromebook, we checked them out again.
Okay.
But, yeah, no, they'll keep their device through. I don't really know what elementary school's summer school is.
It's in-person and it's.
And it's mostly paper stuff. Neil did it one year and I don't think we had a device period.
So, it's not, if anything, would be done in there?
Yeah.
So, on your, on your account audit, is that going through your applications and removing accounts that are no longer needed?
Yeah. A lot of times, what I'll do is, I'll do an export out of our various accounts, like, I'll do an export out of Google, I'll do an export out of active directory, and I will share it with DHR, so Andrew now, he will get a copy of it, Kate will get a copy of it, and we'll just kind of go through and cross-reference everybody that we know is no longer a user, and we'll remove them all in one.
Okay, so you're talking about AD-level users with that?
Yeah.
What about the applications?
Most applications are single sign-on, so.
But, they often have an account within the system that's linked to the single sign-on, right? Like, still a user profile there that has access granted?
Some of them. Clever and Canvas do not. We don't actually upload accounts, they are full-on, they go back and authenticate against Google automatically. Adobe does, and I do clean out Adobe, so.
I'm thinking like, some of the other ones, like SIS and others that have a key systems, we have to look at the access on those and clean it up.
Sue Roy cleans up everything every year in SIS. Yeah, yeah, all students are, any student that is no longer with us, the account is, however, is deactivated and retained for historical reasons. Same staff.
I'm thinking more application-level users, like admins who have come and gone, takes my time, like in the block community.
For SIS?
Yeah.
For IC, they actually don't have a lot of access. I mean, you have accounts.
I, I, you're saying like, one of the.
I'm just asking, I mean, it's a key financial system and.
Oh, I don't manage, I.
People come and go, and so, the accounts that are on there, even if they're AD-integrated, may still have accounts there that, that have risk there, people get rehired.
Yeah. If you're speaking about SISFIN, our financial software, Matt actually manages all of the users in that, I don't have access to.
Okay, I don't know, I'm sure he has something.
Yeah, he terminates any time.
But, he's not too near you, that may be.
Yeah, I'll find out.
Yeah. That's always been a CFO duty. I don't even have admin privileges to SISFIN, all I can do is do my POs and prove Jeff's POs. Yeah, and it's not actually integrated, SIS doesn't integrate well with anything, and so, it's by itself, and so, those user accounts are all local and Matt manages them all.
I'll find out if we can update from that.
They have support.
SISFIN is a DOS 16 application with a window wrapper over the top of it, and it hasn't been updated in about a decade. It's also.
That may have other issues.
It also doesn't talk to anything, so.
Doesn't know how. It's, I mean, it's commonly used to.
It is, it is.
If we are not.
Almost every district uses SISFIN.
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah. And there is some reason, and I don't know the reason, why they continue to choose to use it.
But, I wonder if there's some, some security enhancements they've rolled out over there.
There, yeah.
We could leverage that, maybe we just haven't looked into.
Yeah.
So, so, I know for a fact that the HR portal side of it, the web application, has two-factor authentication enabled. Matt has turned that on and it worked, but you have to authenticate to it like that with two-factor. SISFIN itself is not publicly available, it is, there are few users, man, I would say maybe fifteen at most, and it is only a local install application. There is no outside access to that application period, so. And then, any, we do still have some manual secret services, and, so, things like Parent Square for our communications, it's a hybrid automated setup, so we do a data dump out of Infinite Campus with the information that is needed, and that goes into a secure FTP folder, and then that is pulled up to Parent Square, and then they import the data into the system, and that happens every night. That way, it's freshly synced in the morning. So, half of that is still manual, I guess you would say, like, we have a SQL script that dumps that data for us automatically, but you saw them salvage it every once in a while. But, as long as Infinite Campus is cleaned up regularly, those accounts get removed. And then, so.
The secure FTP side, is that, how, I mean, is it beyond just password security?
It's encrypted. It's, it's the HTTPS version of FTP.
Okay.
Yeah, so, all in encryption from the box.
Do you manage it or is it third-party managed?
It's managed by Parents, we just provide them, we, they send us.
Oh, it's their site?
Yes, yes, they're, they're.
FTP site to be and gone to their.
Yeah, I'm not running an STP server here, so.
Okay, yeah.
They give us an address, we export.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
We're not the same.
No, no, we, we don't run an STP server here. And then, you had some questions about just kind of our budget and, you know, our lifecycle for technology. So, every year, starting in January-ish, I start going through for the budget for the following year, like upcoming school year, that's when we audit all of our software licenses, where we're at with those, the equipment purchases that we're going to do, we have a refresh plan, and so, generally, we try to stick to it, it's been a little fluid. Over the past few years, we pushed staff laptops an extra two years, we didn't replace them on the three-year cycle like we used to, and that was just because of other things going on. Hardware's pretty robust nowadays, I think we were okay. Physically, they get beat up more than the processors die on them. But, generally, it's three to four years for a laptop, five to six for a desktop, which we don't have very many desktops left in the district since we're one-to-one. Servers and hardware, I push a lot longer. I replace my switches finally, that project is happening right now and it's been like ten years. So, and mostly, that was for me wanting to go 10-gig backbone, so, yeah, the technology update, basically, the switches themselves work fine. So, yeah, that's a yearly process for me. We go through it every year, I'll sit down with Matt, a lot of times, oh, sorry, sitting down with you, sat down with Ryan, and we just go through the things that we need and we budget for them. And then, we manage all our inventory, like I said, through follow-up. Every teacher laptop is barcoded and scanned in and assigned to that person, every Chromebook is assigned to a student like a library book being checked out, and we run reports out of that occasionally. The only thing that I would like to tighten up as far as I know is, is I think surplusing equipment probably needs to be a little bit more thorough, as, but, yeah.
Do districts have these devices? Byver places is a big question.
Some do, yeah.
My previous district did.
We looked at it.
There's no better way, one way or the other, I'm just curious if that's.
Yeah, it is, it is. Yeah, some districts do, some don't. We list things like the copiers, that's a yearly counter, that's. And then, this is kind of my wish list of things that I'm going to do.
So, can I ask you about phone systems? I know you have a number of outages with Charter.
We don't have Charter. So, Charter is our internet service pipe, and our VoIP provider, we have a SIP trunk from a company called UC Cloud, which is, I think, based in Canada, or at least, that's where our sort of termination head unit is. Two of the issues that we had with the phone system not accepting calls was a DDoS attack on that carrier, which affected more than just us. I mean, that was a global issue. If we do have issues with Charter, that would affect our telephone service. Most of the time, our service is fine internally, and it's really just that outconnect SIP connection that suffers.
Do districts often contract for redundancy from one internet provider? I mean, because, I think what happens, and, you know, we'll get noticed, is saying, call this person's cell phone, and you don't have a way to contact the school sometimes without going to a number that they're pushing the internet around. And I think, to the extent one manages cell phones, limiting having reliable phone connection seems pretty good.
We looked at redundant internet failover about four or five years ago, and at the time, it was denied, so. So, I think probably for cost reasons, but it's certainly something to look at, yeah. And the dark fiber project that I'm hyped about and will discuss more at some point would also go a little ways to making that better as well. It would be hard on what it is.
Yeah, I was just saying, you've got the floor, Sean. This is your wish list, man, you had to put all this together first, you could at least explain the dark fiber.
A lot of districts will do a project where they bury their own fiber, and so, we contract with a company that does this. We would have to put it out for bid, because it's a very expensive project, it would have to be a blind RFP, but I've already talked to a couple of different companies that do this in the area, other districts have already done this, and some have done it a long time ago, Jennings has had it for like ten years. But, basically, they go around and they trench, and they bury fiber, and it's our fiber, and we can have as much bandwidth as we want off of that fiber, we just have to terminate it in our racks. It would be a private loop, and I have a map, but it would basically go from building to building all the way around, and it's redundant in the fact that it can go either way on the loop, and so, if one building goes down, it would switch over to go to the other building.
Sean, correct me if I'm on cost, talk about cost.
Okay, so, our cost for it, since we're a small district and we no longer have handling industrial court, which there's a creek that they would have to go through, we are looking at just under $300,000 out of pocket if we didn't E-rate it. That can be either paid for as a project, or we can enter into an agreement with them for ten, fifteen, or twenty years and pay that a monthly fee. E-rate, we're a 40% district, and so, we could cover 40% of that cost just by applying for category two E-rate, and we would only pay 60% of that out of pocket. To put it in perspective, the cost monthly for a 15-year agreement with WAN rack is roughly about $6,000 a month. Our pre-E-rate cost from Charter is double that. And so, not only would it be more secure and ours, and we wouldn't have bandwidth limitations, but it's very cost-effective for the district.
So, how much bandwidth are we talking?
I mean, I could do 100 gig right now.
So, being that our district is so close together within two square miles, would wireless be an option?
You could do a point-to-point, but you could never achieve 100 gig, I think.
Three buildings.
I don't know, maybe, I mean, I haven't looked into point-to-point microwave in a long time, but.
With our, you know, with using, yeah, never mind, with using Charter at the different sites, when we've had outages, were all our sites out at the same time, because we're all in a small geographic area?
Yeah.
Okay. The redundancy doesn't really, the dark fiber doesn't help us solve the issue there, because we'd still be depending on Charter's reliability?
No, the fiber would be ours physically. So, internally, WAN-related, we wouldn't go down unless we had an issue with our own fiber.
So, we'd have a fiber connection to another fiber provider?
No, it's a private loop. We would still have internet service from somebody, like, we wouldn't have a public internet connection, but we would no longer lease WAN service on shared line Charter.
What would be the dependency for VoIP? If you had that dark fiber, what would be your dependency for VoIP?
We would still need the internet service fiber.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
What would still be coming on?
AT&amp;T and Charter. But, in that case, we could, yeah, but in that case, with the cost savings from having our own private fiber network, we could have redundant internet connections at each facility, and that could be different providers. Geographically, it's still difficult for us, because we're small, last mile connections are kind of leased all over the place, and so, if we have AT&amp;T and Charter or Socket, hopefully, they're not all on the same circuit, but.
It's a great conversation. I'm finding some.
Yeah, it's, it's trade-offs.
Yeah.
Well, I will say the reason why we didn't approach it previously, because of construction fatigue. I mean, going into the community, it's saying, you got the easement between the street and your house, yeah.
I'm just surprised, I'm surprised there's not, you know, a wireless solution at this point, where you can get at your home wireless connectivity, download a gig a second, you know, T-Mobile or, but I know this is a little bit a different use case, but.
Mm-hmm.
Well, maybe that's, that's worth some, some investigation into those concurrent day options.
Yeah.
What are other districts doing that has an effective day? Does it?
Sure. That's all I have, so, more questions.
On the VoIP system, is there, is there a low-cost option to get more media redundancy? Like, you don't need the full level of Charter bandwidth we get to support a VoIP system, do we, are there other options you can look into that's more immediate in short term?
I certainly would.
Any other questions for Sean?
How do you keep Amy in the loop? What's your cadence with superintendent and other leadership? How you guys support Amy?
He gets to hang out with me.
I do, I do. One of the benefits being small, I just pop in here all the time. Actually, Ronnie and I have a standing, uh, two weeks, right? Yeah. So, Ronnie and I have a standing two-week meeting, and then, we bring Sue Roy in once a month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Both Ronnie and I worked with technology in our previous roles, were in the curriculum instruction department, I mean, the overlap is pretty significant, so. And then, we'll be working in the technology committee, we'll be getting started to be district-level teachers and input that will talk about a lot of the topics that we talked about tonight, both AI as well as some of the other pieces around professional development for cybersecurity and data privacy and helping teachers understand, so those are all different topics that will be addressed as part of that technology committee, which will then inform the CNI board advisory of these are recommendations, this is the work we're doing together, more feedback in that group.
How do you, how do you feel, since this is your first year here, like, where would you rate our technology? Scale of one to 10, 10 being like that?
That's a very good question. It's a little bit of a loaded question. There is a lot, to me, I think we're in a very similar space to where I have been previously. We use different devices in my previous district, at least, I mean, there's some, some of those nuances are different, but all of the conversations that Sean and I've had, they're the exact same conversations I was having in a previous, in my previous district. So, I would say we're, we're in this, I don't know how I would rank my previous district, but I would say that, I think the aligning to the music expectations was exactly where it left off. I think one of the areas that we've already talked about is an area of growth that was new within the last year of my previous job, was this loop of professional development for teachers, really looking at cybersecurity and trying to train them, understanding what phishing, you know, really is, and doing some of this kind of ongoing short pockets of, of quick professional development. So, I would say that's an area that I think, as a district, we probably have a little bit of room to grow that I see, and one of the other pieces is just that connection between curriculum and technology and the resources and making sure that there's a clear process, so it's not falling entirely on Sean.
Yeah.
To be making decisions around curriculum, because although there's the technology piece to it, I also would argue there's a huge curriculum piece of, as far as, is it the right tech, educate from an education standpoint, do we want it in front of kids, and is it the most cost-effective? Sometimes we, teachers will go to a conference and find some, learn some new app that they want to buy that seems great, and it costs money, but there's one that's free. Yes, they're very shocking that the vendors have been doing a good job selling. And, you know, hey, we got a big tote bag with lots of goodies to come to the conference, so, I think that streamlining of that process, which is again, work I was doing in my previous role as well, so I, I feel very comfortable with, with the work that Sean's doing and the conversations that we've had that are very much aligned to my previous experience.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I am far from perfect, and it's just me, like, and I, but I have always tried to take the, the perspective of it needs to be usable in the classroom, not just a piece of hardware that we buy.
Yeah.
And so, I think working with CI, I think that's the right way to go with this, there has to be a purpose. There's got to be a project, there's got to be a purpose. Yeah, I'm new to the district too for two years, I have a childhood, early childhood I've, I've childhood, early childhood center, but, and I wasn't, I hope you didn't take that the wrong way. Oh, no, not at all, no. I was just wondering, is it, like, using technology as a selling point to keep kids here? Sometimes that's very important. That's why I was just asking where we're at, I wasn't.
I mean, I know we're a small district, right? And we have to fix all the same challenges large-scale districts face. And the technology is not always in the sense of it's all. So I appreciate your efforts in supporting that challenge.
Yeah.
So I just have one kind of clarifying question regarding security, you know, visitors. I know there's a, you know, an iPad up there. Is that underneath your realm and like the security camp? Is that underneath I T or where does that fall within the district?
So the divisions fall along access control, like swiping to get in the building, security camera systems, that falls under facilities.
Okay.
For a time, I did all of that, but there were some reasons why it got moved to me, and that was during transition phases. And I took it up because somebody needed to do it. I have given it back to Andy at this point. So, yeah, he does, like, all the intercom and everything.
Kind of connected to the building.
Right.
It's underneath.
But the Raptor, the Raptor program, which is the iPad, that's different.
Is underneath.
That.
That's underneath, okay, okay. Do those have all the same security and M F A requirements that they need to have?
So the iPad for Raptor is kiosk-based. You actually can't get out of the application. I have to disable a thing on.
The end-user, right?
Huh?
The end-user.
Right, right, yeah. So I have to disable something in the management system for that to open up. So right now, it's just the Raptor app, and that can't be adjusted or closed or anything like that.
But the admin, the admin system over that that you're logging into?
B O S A, yeah.
That's, that's secure.
Yeah, there's only two of us that have user accounts to that, and it's two-factor authentication, so. That is one thing with being a small district. I, my account is on Things, and I like to have redundancy. A lot of times I'll add, you know, Alex and Brian were on accounts even if they never touched them. Sue Roy is on a lot of Things because she's the data coordinator. That is a good backup to me in case something were to happen. But, yeah, a lot of, a lot of the systems like MoSile or Google, it, there's only one or two accounts that actually have like a root level privilege, and that's it. The Raptor system is okay. So it takes a lot of effort for me. I work with their support quite a lot.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's great of you to reach him. Thank you so much.
Hey, no problem. Thank you.
Do you need any other tech help?
No, you do not. I appreciate it.
Grab my.
Great. All right, so if I could get.
I'll move that in there. Second.